Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for May 15, 2018. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Daney?
Here.
Gabrenia, absent. Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here.
We've requested that Pastor Sue Allen of Living Lord Lutheran Church do our invocation this evening. Pastor Allen?
Please be seated. This is what happens. I only get to accept an invitation a couple of times because I make you sit down and listen for a minute. This week is a significant week in the religious communities of many of our residents here of Bartlett. Today begins the holy month of Ramadan for those of our Muslim brothers and sisters. This weekend marks Shavuot for our Jewish brothers and sisters, originally an agricultural festival and now a celebration of the giving of the Torah to Moses on Mount Sinai. And for the Christians in our community, this weekend Pentecost, the time of the Holy Spirit being given out to the people at that 50 days after Easter. I am proud and honored to serve in a community of such diversity, which not only marks those festivals, but communities of faith that go far and beyond those. So with your indulgence, lift your hearts and let us pray. Creative and diverse God, we thank you that you come to us in ways that we can understand you. Help us to continue to serve in this community where you are honored and where we are taught to honor each other. Give us grace to do what we need to do for the good of all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Allen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Due to the nature of our agenda this evening, we will be adjourning to executive session to discuss imminent litigation per Section 2C 11 of the Open Meetings Act. And then immediately following executive session, we will be restarting the regular board meeting. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Moved.
Second. Led by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned. I'll reconvene in the regular board meeting and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Daney?
Here.
Gabrenia, absent. Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
All right. Next item we have this evening on our agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on items on the consent agenda. Does anyone like to add anything to the consent agenda at this point?
President Wallace, I'd like to add items A1 and A2 to the consent agenda.
Anybody have any questions or discussion about that?
Mr. President, I'd like to add item F1.
Any discussions or questions about F1?
Do we know what's going on the water tower when it's painted or is this discussion now? I mean...
We can leave it on there if we have some questions.
I do.
Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to add D1 and D2.
All right.
Oh, you under which one?
Um, D, license and ordinance. I think that pretty much covers it. With that, I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the following: The minutes, board minutes from May 1, 2018. The consent will include the bills list from May 15, 2018. The consent will be adding, under Building and Zoning Committee, an ordinance amending the Bartlett zoning ordinance, Chapter 4A residential districts, 104A-2-C-2 chickens poultry. The consent agenda will also be adding, under Building and Zoning and Ordinance, granting a rear yard variation for 521 Lady Smith Road. The consent this evening will also include, under Finance and Golf Committee, a resolution approving the disbursement request for payout number five from the subordinate lien tax increment revenue note, Series 2016, for the Elmhurst Chicago Stone Bartlett Quarry redevelopment project. We'll be adding to the consent agenda this evening, under License and Ordinance Committee, the BAPS parade permit request. We'll be adding to the consent agenda this evening, the License and Ordinance Committee, the Jane Society Parade Permit Request. The consent this evening will also be including a Memorial Day Open Burn Request. The consent this evening will also be including a resolution to authorizing the execution of an equipment lease agreement between John Thomas, Inc. and the Village of Bartlett, temporary traffic light for the 4th of July celebration. The consent this evening, under Police and Health Committee, will also be included, including an authorization to purchase federal task force officer vehicle. The consent will also include an authorization to purchase two police vehicles. The consent this evening will be adding, under Public Works Committee, a resolution approving of the Villa Olivia... Oh, sorry, that's not going to be added. The consent this evening will also include, under Public Works, an authorization to purchase a Skids steer loader. Easy for you to say. The consent, and that would be the amended consent agenda.
All moved.
Second.
Led by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
All moved.
Second.
Led by trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Daney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Motion carries. Next item we have this evening is our treasurer's report. Mr. Treasurer?
You. Yeah, included in your package this week is the treasurer's report for March. Also included is the sales tax report. You'll see that sales tax for the month of January, $196,000. That was up 5,596 from the previous month last year, and that's up 2.9%. Also included, MFT receipts, $80,765. That's down $7,800 from the prior year. We should end up at about $1,800,000 though, maybe $15,000 less than what the budget is.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Next item we have this evening is under the president's report. The first president's report item is a national proclamation for the public works, proclamation National Public Works Week, May 20 through 26, 2018. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water supply, wastewater treatment, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, streets and highways, and forestry; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of a community greatly depends on these facilities and services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel of public works departments is supported when citizens understand the importance of public works; and whereas the year 2018 marked the 58th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President, do hereby proclaim May 20, 26, 2018, as National Public Works Week in the Village of Bartlett, dated this 15th day of May, 2018. Is there any questions anyone has for staff?
I just had a question. With the rainstorms that we had, you know, just recently, did we have a... We had a lot of flooding over here by the Lyons Park. In fact, I saw stalled vehicles out there. Did that... What happened there?
We received a lot of rain in the short duration. It came down really hard, really fast. So we did have some localized flooding, but once the rain stopped, it cleared up fairly quick. So we had some water on roads, but in parks and stuff like that, but dry weather to...
There weren't any injuries or anything, were there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I jumped ahead of ourselves here. I did move over commission appointment.
Oh.
There's Adam Lewinsky in here tonight. Yeah, Adam. So Adam has agreed to accept my appointment to the Economic Development Commission, which we are really thankful for your service. As you start at those meetings, Adam, we look forward to some great stuff. With that, I'll entertain a motion to consent to my appointment of Adam Lewinsky for the Economic Development Commission.
All moved.
Second.
Led by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Motion carries. Adam, thank you in advance for your service. Next item we have this evening is the town hall portion of our meeting. If anyone would like to address the board, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. One minute for you, Terry.
I can do it. Thanks. I'm Terry Witt at 471 Southwestern Avenue here in Bartlett. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and the mayor. That's your last meeting, proclaiming May to be Bike Month. It's Bike Month all over the country, so thank you.
Terry, you didn't know my son is on a 620-mile bike ride right now.
Fantastic.
If I get chimed in here, that means he's live Facebooking me. I'm somewhere in Michigan.
Well, we should have him up here, you know? That's really great.
Yeah.
Of course, I encourage everybody to ride bicycles. And I also want to thank our police department. You had a couple of weeks where you had the Drop It and Drive campaign because of all the distracted drivers that we've got. Between distracted drivers and speeders, I'm sure your son would appreciate if we had none of those because they are a real threat to bicycle riders. Also, tomorrow night, I'd like to invite everybody to our Ride of Silence. In Bartlett, we're one of 400 communities around the world who are riding in silence in memory of bicyclists that are either killed or injured in crashes. So it's an easy pace, seven-mile ride, and last year even, we had one lady who said, "Oh, can I ride on the side path? Can I... Do I have to go across 59?" So she rode with us to Beaver Pond and turned around and, you know, it's not unusual. We have a lot of people who are scared to death of 59, you know, so that's okay. But most of the ride is on roads, and there is a lot of people who are comfortable riding on the road and are willing to help everybody else that's on the ride. So that's tomorrow night. We're going to meet at Spindock for Cycle Works at 6:45, and we'll be over before it's dark. So one thing I've noticed, because I ride around Bartlett quite a bit, is that we have a lot of riders in East Bartlett. West Bartlett, not so much. West Bartlett's that town on the other side of 59. So what I decided to do a couple of weeks ago was take a ride to all of the subdivisions in West Bartlett. So I went out, West Bartlett Road to 25. You know, the people who live in West Ridge, it's easier for them to ride to St. Charles and Elgin than it is to ride to downtown Bartlett. But they're out there. They're our residents. So then on 25, I took a shortcut through Kohler Field in the state park, and we do have a lot of people who drive their bicycles out to the state park and then go for a ride on Fox River Trail. They lunch at Smitty's. They have a couple scoops at the table, a creamery, maybe a cup of coffee down at Two Brothers before they turn around, you know? It's a nice, nice place to ride. So anyway, I come back and I took Sterns to 59 and 59 to Army Trail, Army Trail to Munger, Munger to Spitzer and Spitzer to Blue Heron to Spalding, and that's real nice railroad track feature that we did there on Spalding. Just riding that way, you gotta do one of these because tracks are at an angle to the road and you don't want to get your tires stuck in those rails. It's a pretty nasty spill. So from there, Naperville to Lake Street, over by where we're going to annex some property. But the traffic on Lake Street and 59 is really fast. You know, we have fatal injuries there every couple of years, so you gotta really be careful out that way. So anyway, the ride was about 27 miles, but only about three of it was actually on trails. Rest were on roads and highways where cars are going 45 and 50 miles an hour. So it's a little rough for most of our residents who live on the other side of 59 to get around. So hopefully we get that corrected sometime. And I would definitely encourage us, anytime IDOT offers to put in a bike path, wherever it's at, mostly on 59, please put in that bike path because if we don't, the gaps that get created are so hard to fill when we gotta pay for 100% of it. So I would just encourage us to do that, so. And the last thing, I happen to be on Sterns Road in East Bartlett, and I went down by the Culvert. I didn't ride on it, but I looked at it. It's beautiful. I can't wait for it to open. It's very nice, so.
Thank you, Terry. Would anybody else like to address the board at this time?
Hello, my name is Roma. I'm here representing BAPS charities. I'm going to start off by the video first. ...we raised money to help a very important cause, nature. BAPS charities partnered with the Nature Conservancy to plant 1 billion trees by 2025. Isn't that pretty cool? The Walkathon also helped our community by raising money for the Bartlett Public Library and the Bartlett High School Booster Club. So for a few weekends this spring, I told everybody about what we were doing. I told all my friends, I told my family members, I told my neighbors, I even told my teachers. I was able to collect over $100 just by talking to all the people I knew. Finally, on June 11, the day of the walk came. Our whole family got to the park in Bartlett so we could help set up for a fun packed day. We got really cool t-shirts, water bottles, and even a sling bag. It was really fun to stand in the opening ceremony and see everyone from the community. After that, it was time to walk. We walked down the streets of Bartlett until we had gone all the way around town. We walked a whole five kilometers and finally made it back to the park for fun activities. We raised money for a good cause. We spent the day with friends and family, and most of all, we made a difference.
Favorite charities here at the Conservancy, they've done so much for our Plant a Billion Trees effort. When I heard it was coming back here in Bartlett, I volunteered right away. I was just so excited to be out here. It's another beautiful day. You have hundreds and hundreds of walkers here who are committed to the environment and committed to walking on behalf of our organizations.
The walk today is fantastic. It's much more than we expected, the size of the crowd, the hospitality of everybody here. Everybody's very welcoming to us, and we're excited to be a partner.
I can't wait till next year.
Speaking of this year, so I'm here to talk about Walk Green 2018, which will be taking place in a couple of weeks, on June 10, at the Bartlett Park at 7:30 a.m. And again, we're going to be supporting the Nature Conservancy to help plant a billion trees this year. But in addition to that, I'm really excited that we'll be supporting our local fire department as well as our local police department. In the past, we've done the Bartlett Booster Club as well as the Bartlett Public Library, so, yeah, and the district. So I'm just inviting everyone to please come, bring your friends, families, neighbors, and everyone. I'd love to see you guys there. And please, if you have any questions, check out the website, bapscharities.org/walk18chicago. And we have some brochures that we're going to pass around, and we'll leave some in the bag, so, thank you.
Thank you, Roma.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Dan, are you walking?
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay.
Hi, John Ellenardo with Frederick Quinn Company. Just be happy to answer any questions as we get to our last week of construction before the move next Thursday. Couple of you have been through the building, so really just happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I have a whole list of questions here.
Let's go.
Only kidding. You go through it.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks for being here. Would anyone else like to address the board at this time? I'd really encourage everyone to go out and walk with BAPS. They're... They've given to the Bartlett Park District Foundation a large sum, to the Bartlett Library, now to the Police and the Fire Department with a portion of their charity, so thank you for doing that. Next up, we have our standing committee reports this evening. First standing committee report is under Building and Zoning Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. All of our items, A1 and A2, were covered under the consent agenda.
Thank you, trustee Hopkins. Next item we have under Community Economic Development is Committee Chairman Gabrenia. She is absent this evening. She has nothing on her agenda this evening. Next item, Understanding Committee reports, is the Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Daney.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item we had on the agenda was covered under consent.
Thank you, Chairman Daney. Next item, Understanding Committee reports, is License and Ordinance Committee, Chairman Cameron.
Thank you, Mayor. Under License and Ordinance, everything was also covered under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Cameron. Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro?
Thank you, Mr. President. The two items we had were covered under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next item we have is Public Works Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three items on public works this evening, starting with number one, resolution approving of the Villa Olivia Elevated Tank Painting and Repair Agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Seven Brothers Painting. Dan, can you briefly outline that for us?
Sure. I'm sure you all seen the Villa Olivia Tower. It's in need of repainting, and it actually has some repairs to be made. I think trustee Cameron had asked a question in regards to the paint scheme, and right now, what we're looking at is it'll be a white bulb with the village logo on both sides.
Okay.
And then it'll be a blue stem going up. We got an option, alternate, for the Park District to add Villa Olivia on the stem, but that's up to them on whether they want to spend the money on that or not. We let them know that that was an option, but they haven't notified us. They have to bring it to the board to see whether they would want that or not.
You answered my question, and that was it. I was just wanting to make sure that we had... If we're going to pay for it, I want it to represent the village.
And we're not having a basketball?
No basketball.
Eren has all the luck.
I know the water tower on Kent Circle, it has our emblem on it also, but it's extremely hard to make out. Is this... Are we going to have a similar issue with the water tower on 20 by Villa Olivia?
I don't believe so. That tower was pretty small.
Okay.
I think they probably could have went a little larger on the logo, but they said that it starts to distort as you go around that ball part of it. But since this tower is bigger, I think it'll look... It'll come out all right.
Thank you, Dan.
And why the white with the blue stem?
The logo sticks out more than, I think, right?
Aesthetics.
Well, one of the things, if you've seen like white towers, you get that, the mold that grows on the bottom of the ball and down the stem. So having a darker color, I've seen more towers are doing that to kind of hide the mold that grows, but have the darker color on the bottom part.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I move to approve a resolution approving the Villa Olivia Elevated Tank Painting and Repair Agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Seven Brothers Painting, which is resolution...
2018-60.
2018-60.
Second.
Led by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Cameron. Is there any other discussion? Coming in, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries.
The second item that we have, I'm just going to make the motion. I move to approve Resolution 2018-61, a resolution rejecting the State of Illinois Department of Transportation's proposed bicyclists and pedestrian improvements along Illinois 59 at West Bartlett Road intersection.
Second.
Led by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
You first?
Paul, at the expense of having the bike paths connections, why are we not doing that? Or Dan, maybe? But it would be a starting point, right, for then, for us to... Now that we're actually starting to get some traction on the bike committee, we're going to have funding to potentially do new paths as we go along. It just seems like if we had something already put in place so we could have a connection to it, I like the idea.
We looked at it, and we're including the West Bartlett east-west connection. That'll get rebuilt. But they were proposing north and south as part of their requirements. Any project that they do, they have to look at pedestrian bicyclists as well. But when you head north from West Bartlett, you run into the bridge. And to have a path built that goes to the bridge, I don't think we necessarily want people to direct it up that way. Now they go north, and they either have to make a decision to turn around and come back, or they go out onto the road to try to get across the bridge. We thought it'd be better that when and if the state has a bridge project where they would widen it and accommodate bicyclists and pedestrians, at that time, we would make that connection. There's no plans in the future right now for that bridge. So we didn't... We ultimately take responsibility of that trail. So we would have a trail that goes nowhere. It's ours. By the time it actually goes somewhere, it'll probably have to be rebuilt at that time. So we thought it would be best at this time to just postpone it until a future project.
I understand. Thank you.
And I echo trustee Cameron's concerns. So what is the IDOT plan? I don't remember. I mean, is the plan just to have the sidewalk end at the bridge, or are we going under the bridge? It doesn't make any sense to me.
It would just go to a dead end, and we've got those all over the place. They do that with the hope that eventually that it will connect. Unfortunately, between our funding, state funding, those plans don't come together. You know, so we thought it would be best just to wait until we actually have a project that will actually bring it somewhere. The one on Lake and 59, those improvements, they're actually bringing that path north and connecting up to Streamwoods sidewalk or path, so that actually makes sense. So we're making a connection. This one went to a bridge that was not... Was hazardous for a pedestrian to try to cross at that point.
I guess I'm just having a hard time conceptualizing how that would even work. I mean, wouldn't we go under the overpass?
It would all depend on what they're doing. If they're adding lanes to 59 at some point, they would widen it and do it wide enough for bicyclists to be able to also cross. To go under, now you have to deal with the train tracks, so you'd have to go over or under the tracks. At that point, it's probably cheaper to go above it. At, at that point, it's probably cheaper to go above it, since you already have a bridge there.
Okay. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to come in and talk with me again. Anything else? Okay. Aaron, we have a motion already. It's already been moved. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
No.
The motion carries.
Okay, one more item. I move to approve Resolution 2018-62, a resolution...
64.
64. Oh, 64. A resolution approving of the First Amendment to the DuPage Water Commission Water Purchase and Sale Contract with the Village of Bartlett for the Village of Bartlett Unit System.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Cammer. Um, is there any additional discussion that we haven't had? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
President Wallace?
Yes. That motion carries.
All we have for Public Works this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Where are we at with this entertainment? Is there any new business that anyone would like to discuss at this time? Questions for staff? I have a question. Where are we at with Sterns? You knew that was coming, Dan.
I was hoping it was coming.
I've been telling people two days. No.
It's supposed to be open this week. However, the weather has not cooperated. If you, if you've been out there...
Yeah.
Uh, they've got the, they were able to get the paving done last Friday, actually, so they have to stripe it still, and then they have to get some dirt along, uh, basically between the curb and the bike path, get that restored, and unfortunately, with the rain, they haven't been able to get in there. We're hoping the rest of the week looks good. We're hoping by the end of the week, we should be able to open the road, so.
That would be fantastic.
I guess I have a, a question that I didn't want to pull off the consent agenda, but I, but it is a question. Would it make, not make sense for us to start thinking about buying a traffic light as opposed to paying the money that we pay every year?
Road, that portion of Sterns Road, I believe, is the county's jurisdiction, so I don't know how that would work.
No, 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 I'm talking about the temporary traffic.
The temporary light for the 4th of July.
Oh, oh, purchase a temporary light?
I mean, I see what we're paying for it every year for the one, or for the, for the week that we use it. I'm just thinking, if we had one, we could use it for other things, and we wouldn't be paying this every, every year, but I don't know how expensive they are or anything else.
I don't, I haven't looked into how much it would cost to purchase them, but also we would have to find someplace to store them, and I don't know if they could be stored outdoors, or they'd have to be inside somewhere.
And they set it up and operate it, so, um, we'd have to, I mean, we'd have to get trained on that, but we could look into that.
Okay. And when it's not being used, Chairman Cammer could use it, like, for lights in his house.
I could. I could put it right by my driveway.
Any other questions? We'll be moving directly into the committee, the whole meeting after this adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting.
So moved.
Second. By Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.